Want to make the announcement, ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, WWE. Let's lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Successor Agency Housing Authority Finance Authority.
Any person wishing to address City Council on any item on days adjourned may do so at this time. Aye.
Aye, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, City Clerk and City Treasurer. I'm here at the request of Congresswoman Maxine Waters who asked me to be here on her behalf to listen to the report from City Treasurer Wanda Brown. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item one, CSA one and H one. Oh, go in the corner, Maria, I'm sorry, please. My bad.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. So I'm actually here today on behalf of Jan Vogel. He is unable to be present today, and I am a member of the South Bay Workforce Investment Board, so he asked me to do this for him. I'm here to distribute the quarterly reports, and I have copies for everyone here. This report summarizes the January sixteenth, twenty twenty South Bay Workforce Investment Board meeting activities and program accomplishments during the second quarter of the program year of twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Great things to report, Inglewood Teen Center celebrated its sixth anniversary on October third, twenty nineteen. During the ceremony, three students were recognized and received certificates from the South Bay Workforce Investment Board. Those in attendance included students, parents, community civic leaders. Mayor Butts was present along with Councilwoman Franklin, Teen Center partners, as well as the Workforce Investment Board members and staff. So it was a wonderful event. In the last quarter, South Bay One Stop Business and Career Centers were successfully able to enroll a total of forty-four Inglewood residents in both adult and dislocated worker programs. South Bay One Stop Business and Career Centers exited a total of forty-nine Inglewood residents with employment during the second quarter, and the Inglewood One Stop Business and Career Centers held eight recruitment fairs during the second quarter with various employers, including the Youthville Harmonic, U.S. Census Bureau, Amazon Exclusive Detailing, Liberty and Smith Field Foods located in the city of Inglewood. Over four hundred jobs seekers attended the recruitment fairs, resulting in eighty individuals who got jobs that day. Two hundred and thirty-three youth visited the Inglewood Teen Center during the second quarter, which is awesome. And this is it. This concludes my oral report. Thank you for allowing me to do this today.
Thank you so much. Any other public comment? At the end, not right now. All right, we'll close public comment. Item one, CSA one and H one.
Move allow payment of the bills.
Madam Clerk.
Aye.
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 Your Chairman Butts.
Aye, consent, Countler, items two through eight.
So moved. Second.
Madam Clerk.
Councilmembers, Dotson.
Aye.
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 Aye, S P H one.
Twelve-bedroom community care residential health facility at eight fourteen North Market Street.
That's a public hearing for February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty at two P M. A one.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a closed session regarding CSA one, which is Mercuria versus the city of Inglewood. Has to that one, there's a request for settlement authority on that matter?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Yeah, I would just want to.
Oh, no. Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk. We move to give settlement authority.
Oh, close session. I'm sorry, I didn't get the motion.
The motion was, the motion was to allow the City Clerk to settle the item that.
City Attorney.
City Attorney, I'm sorry.
Okay, I like that.
The City Attorney to settle.
Settlement authority.
Settlement authority. Did you get the motion and the second? Okay.
Councilmembers, Dotson, Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Franklin.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. C M one.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no oral reports from City Manager's office.
C C one.
No reports. Thank you, Mayor.
C T one.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the Blanca, she was the District Director for Congresswoman Waters' office to come and ask the Mayor to allow me to give my full report. And it's unfortunate that I had to actually call the Congresswoman's office this morning in that, you know, my mic was turned off last, last week, and all I'm asking is just simply be given time to give my oral report. And the Congresswoman was in a very important meeting at the time, but she left that meeting and to talk to me until she had her District Director of the Los Angeles Office to come to ask this council to give me time to give my full oral report. Now, on February the third, you know, a number of information was provided to the council. Today, I will discuss two of the many questions that I've received from residents regarding the last two City Council meetings and comments made by Ms. Mayor Butts, and also misuse of public funds. One of the questions was, please explain the NFL stadium, how it ended up in Inglewood, how much money will it generate, and will it cost the residents or property owners any money to build it? The Rams owner, Stan Karnicki, desired to bring his team from St. Louis back to the Southern California area. Crime was up in St. Louis, tickets were down, and his contract was ending, and Mr. Karnicki had no intentions of renewing his contract with St. Louis. Remember Walmart, wanted to build a Walmart here. The voters voted that particular measure down. Walmart purchased a thirty acres that their proposed store was to be built upon, and, 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 and we wanted to guess, and also, they purchased those thirty acres at thirty million dollars. And guess who Stan Karnicki is married to? A Walmart daughter. Walmart purchased thirty acres for thirty million dollars again, and, and three years later, they were offered ninety million dollars for that. There was no other place that that stadium could be built except in the city of Inglewood. That's where that stadium was to be built, no matter what was, no matter who was mayor. If Donald McDuck was mayor, or Gwendolyn McDuck was mayor, that stadium was going to be built here. The stadium, according to Moody's estimate, will generate roughly about twenty-five million dollars annually. Mr. Stan Karnicki is putting his own money to construct a stadium and propose five thousand-seat performance arts venue. The seventy thousand-plus-seat stadium is a centerpiece of a two hundred and ninety-eight acre complex developed by Rams owner Stan Karnicki and shared by owner Dean Spanos. There is a shared infrastructure between the NFL and the city. Environmental Impact Study Hollywood Park tomorrow headed by Chris Mini and other essentials that was assisted by the council and State Senator Steve Bradford to move this massive NFL project that started roughly about one point eight billion to approximately now five billion dollars due to changes regarding the top of the stadium. The stadium is approximately one hundred feet in the ground. Question two, how can my daughter get one of those first-time homes where the city will pay more than six hundred thousand for the home?
Madam Treasurer, your time is up.
Hard-working daughter.
Cut her mic off. Miss, you're, you're. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Brown. All right. CSA two, CS, CSA two? CSA two?
Order.
Okay, ma- Madam Clerk, you're out, you're out.
You're out of order.
You're out of order. Madam.
Point of order.
Madam Treasurer, madam treasurer, you're out of order. Okay, I think she's done. All right. CSA two?
Approval of the minutes for the successor agency meeting held on January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty.
Move approval?
Second.
I can't hear.
Madam Clerk.
Move approval of the minutes for CSA successor agency on January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty.
Second.
Dotson.
Aye.
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 Chairman Butts.
Aye. Adjourn the successor agency. H two?
Approval of the minutes for the Housing Authority meeting held on January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty.
Move approval?
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Housing Authority members.
Aye.
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 Aye, adjourn the Housing Authority. F one?
Does the council sit there?
Approval.
Madam.
Point of order.
Ma-
Point of order.
Wait, let, you guys.
Madam City Clerk, Madam City Treasurer.
You guys, you guys, let it be.
You're out of order.
Can we call for recess?
No, 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 let it be, let it be. Let it be, let it be. All right, we're back to F one.
Of the minutes for the Finance Authority meeting held on January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty.
Move approval?
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Finance Authority members, Dotson.
Aye.
Madam Clerk.
Are we on F one, Mayor?
The last, we're at Finance Authority, I have the motion, vote for Dotson, I'm just picking.
Yeah, right.
Aye.
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 Chairman Butts.
Aye, we'll adjourn the Finance Authority. P one?
Approval of the minutes.
Approval?
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Parking Authority members, Dotson.
Aye.
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 Chairman Butts.
Aye, we'll adjourn the Parking Authority. J P A one?
Approval of the minutes for the.
Approval?
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Members, Dotson.
Aye.
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 Chairman Butts.
Aye, we'll adjourn the J P A. There are no appointments to boards and commissions, public comment. Person wishing to address the City Council on any matter connected with city business not elsewhere, connected, considered on adjourned may do so at this time.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I'm Robert Pulliam from Assemblywoman Autumn Burke's office. I want to invite everyone out to Assemblywoman Burke's first community coffee. She's inviting everyone to come out to enjoy a free cup of coffee and to share your thoughts regarding state legislation and ideals of how we can improve our community and improve our state. This is our first endeavor to get out into the community and have like these community coffees throughout the sixty-second Assembly District, and we're starting right here in the city of Inglewood. That's going to be Saturday, February the twenty-ninth at eight A M. to nine thirty A M. It's going to be held at the Seven Eleven Store on Prairie, it's nine one three South Prairie Avenue, the one right off or close to Opera Vita in Prairie. We also going to be taking pictures with some of our community organizations. Also, the C H P mascot will be on hand to take pictures as well. If you haven't seen Chipper, it's either Chip or Chippy, one of the two. He'll be on hand as well to take pictures with the community, and we're just going to have a good time. And she just wanted to share, have an opportunity for you to share your thoughts on how we can make our state better. So everyone come out, once again, it's February twenty-ninth, Saturday at eight A M. at the Seven Eleven Store.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right.
Good afternoon, Mayor, governing body of the city of Inglewood and residents. My name is Michelle Chambers, and I come before you on behalf of the Los Angeles County Assessor's Office. I just wanted to come by today and remind everyone that February fifteenth is the deadline for the homeowner's exemption. If you're a homeowner in Los Angeles County, primary, and your home is your primary residence, and you purchased the home before January first, you are eligible for seven thousand, taking off your assessed value of your property, resulting in seventy-dollar credit on your tax bill. This is every year, you filed an application one time, answering the three questions, and it would automatically roll over. Again, this program is for anyone who owns a home in L.A. County before January the first, after January the first, and utilizes it as your primary residence. Sir Mayor, I came before you today, Inglewood, while Inglewood is twenty-eight percent of residents currently not requir, not obtaining, taking advantage of this credit. So while you're still, you're doing pretty good.
Am I eligible for it?
I'm sorry?
Am I eligible for it?
Anyone before us, my city. Watch it. My city's number seven. So you see the passion, sir, of why I'm going around to, around to the community, at community meetings, at city halls, speaking to residents, just to everyone take advantage of the credit. Last year, we left thirty million dollars on the table, applications in the hallway, as well as other tax savings programs. I thank you all again for this opportunity. Have a blessed day. Thank you.
Mayor, point of comment from Ms. Chambers, while she's still here. There's been confusion by the residents I've been dealing with, that if they take this credit for the seven thousand or seventy dollars they receive, it is in exchange for Proposition thirteen.
No.
We've been telling them it hasn't. Does your documents provide anything to solidify that Prop thirteen is a separate legislation that has been put into law, and this is in addition to?
That is correct. Councilman Franklin, we do have something stating that effect. Proposition thirteen is a state law, which everyone is covered under, and it does not induce an assessment, a tax assessment, or it does not trigger an assessment. Again, Proposition thirteen is separate, totally separate from the exemption. Proposition thirteen is a state mandate.
Thank you for clarifying that, Ford. Much appreciated.
You're absolutely welcome. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any other public comment? Mr. Davis, welcome back. No, Mr. Davis, come on, it's good to see you.
You have no idea how good it is to see all of you. It's been a road. The third of last year, I was under the knife for over twelve hours. Good Lord, and your prayers had a part in me being here right now. I'm sorry if I go over people, you know, about my life. I was either going to have to do this or die. Touches the soul to know how many people who cared. You don't find out until you're down and out. That's how the old saying goes. Well, I found out. How many thank yous I, I'm, I'd kiss her because laid hands and we prayed together after I announced that I was going in hospital. I mean, Councilman Alex Padilla came to see me. Politicians don't have to do that. Know that? They don't. They're busy. He could have done something else, and I wouldn't have held it against him. Mayor and everybody, I was in their prayers, and all of you. And great to be living in Inglewood and have my life. And I want to promise you something. After, as I said, twelve hours of surgery, days in the hospital convalescing, carrying a fourteen-inch scar, breast bone to brisket, as they like to say, for the rest of my life, it's going to count for something. Whatever I was calling myself going to do, it's not going to be called, it's going to be done. I'm going to find a way. It's time to live, people. Life is on the line. I guess maybe you can't appreciate it, but my life was on the line. Don't wait until yours is. I'm living, let's strive and move forward. City's got a way to go. Obviously care where it's going, otherwise you wouldn't be here. So get together and not fight amongst one another. Let's come up with solutions, and let's carry on, okay? Because I'm there with you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you for your love and your prayers, all of you.
Thank you.
All right, Ray.
All right.
Get the same three-minute courtesy?
Ma'am, you'll get a minute, and Chair can listen to this discretion.
Loretta Andrews was killed on Van Ness and eighty-fourth, February first, eleven forty-five P M. She was a strong black woman that was trying to get housing through hopics. Between you and Mark really Thomas, none of you helped her, and she got hit by two Mexicans in a car, and they tried to burn the evidence. You guys put a stoplight there or a light now, two days after she was killed, it's dark, and you guys didn't care for her. So I'm disgusted by the way that the city of Inglewood is blaming Loretta Andrews, a black woman trying to seek housing, for her own death. And it's disgusting. I want you guys to pay for her funeral. I want you to apologize to her five children, who now doesn't have a mother, only because Loretta Andrews was a black woman born and raised in L.A. County. There's a very sad disparity for housing for immigrants and housing for native black women. And Loretta Andrews' legacy shall not die. So I have copies of her obituary, as well as her funeral and her memorial, which I want each of you to attend.
Thank you, ma'am.
Including you.
My name is Willie A. G., and I live in the beautiful city of Inglewood. You know, I appreciate this city. I don't see what the city of Inglewood can be responsible for every person that get killed, that passes away in this city, you know. I just don't see it myself. So, you know, but this is number one city in the United States, number one in the United States. Done everything here that they say we couldn't do. Believe me, eighteen years. Love this city. I love the mayor. I love the council people. I love the staff. I love all of the elected people. And we've been getting along for a long time, and I hope we continue, because that's what keep this city. Thank you, Mayor. You're number one.
Thank you, sir. Aye.
Ain't no nobody or nothing, or, I don't know. I honestly don't even know. I just want justice in my mind. Well, the, I don't know what it's called. I guess the victim of crime saying they're not going to pay for it. But you can't, like, she didn't predict that she was going to get hit by a car, or she didn't like, you know, tell the car to hit her, for them to put the blame on anybody else or anything. I don't know. It's just that I would like for victim of crime to help us, because we can't afford this funeral. She got killed on the same day we buried my other cousin. So like, you know how expensive funerals is, like, can't afford to bury somebody in the same family the same month. Like, that is a lot to bury two people in the same month. Like, it's.
We're very sorry for, for her loss. Very sorry. That was a hit and run at seventy-ninth to Van Ness?
On eighty-fourth and Van Ness, yeah.
Yeah, it's very sad. Victims of violent crime do not, does not provide compensation for victims of accidents. They consider that a traffic accident, and I'm, I'm very sorry for your loss.
And before you, in honor of my niece that was killed, struck down on the first, struck down that night, cold-blooded, with kids that depended upon her, kids that she was fighting to get back in her custody, seeking housing. My niece is a leader. I know she is. She was seeking to get a business for cooking. That's what she known to do. She loved cooking. And I spent quite a bit of time with my niece, speaking of her goals, her dreams, and for her kids. And I just want justice myself for my niece. And we need justice, because that was just cold-blooded, for someone to keep going and to strike her down dead and didn't even care. So I really do, we really not going to rest until we seek justice, until we get justice.
Fully understand, ma'am.
Thank you.
Our condolences.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Everybody's here. I'm sorry. I'm kind of nervous on the behalf of speaking, publicly speaking in front of everybody, but it's very emotional for me as well. I'm also speaking in regards of Loretta Andrews, which was a close friend of mine, like a sis. And I'm speaking on behalf of her. I'm very, very emotional in regards to this matter. I'm just reaching out and asking, can you guys please help with a thorough investigation in seeking justice for the death of Loretta Andrews, which you guys are already aware, it occurred February the first, approximately at eleven fifty-nine. She was actually taken to the father of her youngest child's house, and from there, she was hit in the middle of the street on Manchester and eighty-fourth and Van Ness. The car hit her, hit and ran. It kept going. I have reached out and I spoke to neighbors. I'm trying to find out anyone that have cameras in that area that can actually bring us to justice and closure. I was actually told by a couple of neighbors that the car was going seventy miles per hour. The car never stopped. It never regarded that it hit her. It kept going. In spite of the car hitting her, hitting Loretta Andrews, her life did matter. Every bone in her body was actually broken. She was dragged. She was a human being. She had a life. She had five children. She had dreams. And me, as a close friend to her, I know that she was a very determined and motivated person, and all I'm seeking, not blaming no one, I'm blaming the person that hit her, because we, we deal with life situations and death every day. That's just a part of life. I do understand that. But to maliciously hit someone and don't stop and keep going and destroy evidence, let the family know that you are aware of the death that you caused to this human being, and her life matters. And all I'm asking is for family, friends, and her kids for justice and closure. And thank you very much for taking the time to listen.
Thank you, ma'am. Again, our condolences.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Staff. My condolences to Mrs. Andrews on the untimely death. I am totally sorry. But on a better note, George Dotson, thank you for your shredding event this weekend. It was a very. George Dotson, thank you for your shredding event this weekend. It was a very successful event. Thank you, Ms., your assistant, Ms. Alicia. Y'all did a fine job, fine, fine job. Very well turned out, very well attended. Thank you for the donuts and coffee. Uh, and, uh, your wife coming and everybody. Just keep up the good work, Mr. Dotson. And thank you very much. Everyone have a beautiful blessed week and a great day.
Thank you, Mister Bailey. Um, with that, we'll close public comment. And now we're on to council comments. Your Councilman Dotson, District One.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh, if they put up my pictures, I'd, I'd appreciate that. Okay, uh, I want to thank everyone who came out. We had over one hundred people who came out to my annual sweating event this past Saturday. Even Assistant Manager, uh, David Esposito, who has been coming out for the last three years. I thank you. And, uh, Public Works Staff, especially Andrew Williams, who arranged for me to start this event seven years ago. And also Don Harris of Republic Service. Uh, if you didn't come out, you missed it. We had a great time. Uh, those who I had the time came in, had a little coffee and, and donuts with us. So, uh, i- it was a great time. So I want to thank everybody who came out. Uh, tomorrow, I'm having my bi-monthly Black Club Captains and Residents Meeting in the new remodel community center, twenty-nine oh-one Westchester. I mean, Manchester, twenty-nine oh-one West Manchester. Uh, my thanks go out to the, the city facility staff, under supervision of Tanya Ferguson, Public Works Staff, under supervision of Harry Frisbee, for their outstanding job they did on this center. This center is over twenty years old. It's never been redone. You just gotta see it. They did a wonderful job. And my thanks go out to this council, because without them, I could never done it. So thanks, everyone, uh, for my new, uh, District One, uh, Community Center.
Thank you, Councilman Dotson. Wait, you have another thing? Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilman Padilla, District Two.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of quick things. You know, we're, we're celebrating Black History Month. And so many times, we're always looking, you know, who, who are these folks that, that we can, you know, give thanks for? And, and we're always looking for somebody, you know, over in Washington DC or somebody in some other state or even other cities. But yet, all we have to do is look around here. Lot of folks here that, you know, are very deserving of their accolades for what they do in our communities. Uh, whether they own a business or whether they're just involved and engaged in our community. You know, they are what makes Black History Month so important, because they are the mentors. They are the big brothers, the big mothers and sisters and, and adopted parents. And so when I think about Black History Month, I think about our local folks. Brother from another mother right here, you know, and, and for his service in the military and what he does in our, in our community. Uh, Willie A.G. I look at our city manager, Artie Fields, and his leadership that he provides here, uh, the city of Inglewood. And Sabrina Barnes, you know, who is our director back there for Public uh, Parks and Recs and, and the library and all she does and how she balances everything. Chris Jackson is sitting back there as well, their leadership and what they do to mentor and develop their staff and others in our community. And not to mention, you know, our city clerk and our deputy city clerk, Ivan and Ayesha, and for what they do. So I, I say that to say this. We don't have to look far for those examples. They're sitting right here in our backyard. And don't worry, I didn't forget about our mayor and everything he did. You know, and continues to do. You know, I, we, we go back thirty years, you know, so, you know, I, I've always appreciated his friendship and his leadership. You know, a person that, that stands for, for those that may not be in a position to stand for themselves. So, you know, we celebrate Black History Month, but I celebrate it all year, all year round. And for me, it's, it's always about being appreciative and thankful for the relationships that we have. Uh, you know, I, I do want to thank, uh, Michelle Chambers. Uh, she was here earlier talking about the homeownership exemption program. Please, please take advantage of that. Share that. We put that in our newsletters. The city of Inglewood al- also is putting it out there. Let's not leave free money on the table like that. Take advantage of those opportunities. Uh, they're there for, for all the homeowners. Uh, as you know, we are not meeting next Tuesday, because it's President's Day and President's Week. So, uh, we won't see you next Tuesday. We'll see you the following Tuesday. And I just gotta say, I was a little baffled when, you know, when a person gets up here and talks about that, all these things that are happening in Inglewood. Mayor, if I can just get a quick minute.
Yes, you can.
Uh, we're gonna happen anyway. You know, and I'm like, are you serious? Donald Duck could have been here and done that. And, and, you know, I just, it, it's unfortunate.
Donald Duck was here.
Somebody would say something like that, knowing that that is not even close. And, uh, you know, we do a lot of hard work. And I say we, I include all of us. You know, I include the community, you know, for, uh, doing all the heavy lifting that we had to do to get the stadium to come to Inglewood, you know, and to have. And you look out there and you see a state-of-the-art stadium that's being built. That doesn't just accidentally happen regardless of who's here. Uh, to me, that's just disappointing. Uh, and so with that, I say, oh, Ray Davis, brother, it's so good to see you back and up on your feet. You know, so it's always good to have you back. Always good to have you back, brother. So, uh, with that, I, I will ask that we close in the memory of Loretta Andrews, who was, uh, tragically killed in that hit-and-run traffic accident back at the first of, uh, February. And I know that the police department is doing their investigation and, and those things are moving forward. It's just always so, it's such a tough thing to go through. So with that, thank you, everybody, for coming out.
Thank you, Councilman Franklin, District Four.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There's been a lot of discussions today regarding about how fragile life really is. And you've identified that those by faith can identify and claim their healing and be able to then come and publicly express the gratitude of all the prayers, fellowship, and loved ones that came forward to embrace that faith. And hats off to Raymond Ronald Davis for fighting the good fight of faith and then coming back and giving testimonial just about how life it grade it is to be alive and well. My heart also goes out to the, uh, Loretta Andrews family that quickly was taken away at a twinkling of an eye. Again, life is so fragile, which happened yesterday afternoon, right here off of Florence and Sentinela. Multiple vehicle accidents occurred, running through lights, high-speed racing, or high-speed any event. It created more homicides, more family tragedies that we have to now embrace for their losses. And staying with this sad note, unfortunately, uh, Mayor, I have to reach out to you to close the meeting in honor of two individuals. One is Johnny Lathrum, who's been a lifetime, longtime, forty-plus-year member of the city of Inglewood in District Four on Seventh Avenue, Willie A.G.'s neighbor. Um, also is a person that has regularly been very effective behind the scenes, supporting the city of Inglewood. And that's with the South Bay City Council of Government. And that is Jackie Baccarat's father, husband, just passed away. So close in honor of Bob Baccarat, Bob Baccarat, if you would please. The Cog has been very effective on us getting a number of federal dollars, state dollars, and local monies available for us for the improvements of our streets, the lighting, um, purification of water, et cetera, and including water runoff, storm drain, water off, uh, water. It's been, been very effective. So all those individuals that have been mentioned, uh, you're in my prayers. And on that note, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Morales, District Three.
Everything has been covered pretty good. Alex did a good job touching a couple of things that are important today. One of which is, um, you know, how things happen around here. I can honestly say I was real close to some things at the beginning of it. And I can tell you that most of the big projects that happened today were because we figured out the little things, the things that seemed small but could have really broken a city. You know, when we got up here and we had to do layoffs and we had to do furloughs and we had to raise the water rates and lifetime medical, uh, renegotiated from the groups. Those are the difficult steps that, you know, as an official up here, it seems as though it just kinda happens, but you lose sleep on it, because you know it affects people. But the bottom line is, is that when a big investment is looking at a city, they need to feel that stability. They need to feel that the government will make the difficult decisions to establish who they are and create an environment where everybody can prosper, including their residents. And that's the most important part of what this Renaissance is about. The most important part was in getting everything in order here first to establish a platform that invites investment. Uh, and then the difficult part is in, in, in maintaining it. And the fact that, you know, at times, we get into a situation where it looks easy. It's like so many people that Alex mentioned, you know, at the time, you know, um, sometimes, you know, as difficult as, as let's say Chris Jackson's job is, or Lewis, they make it look so easy. They make it look so easy to juggle all those projects. And that tends to make it seem like it was easy. But what it is, is the fact that so many people have so much talent and work so hard that they make those things happen. So I'm not, I'm not here to point at anyone who deserves one credit or more credit. Um, but it is kind of, uh, uh, you know, unclear to the public if we say that, uh, it would have happened if we were all asleep for the last, you know, eight years. Um, because it wouldn't have. Uh, and, uh, Ray, we go way back with family and, um, you know, it's good to see you back. Thank you, Mayor.
Hey, first and foremost, Ray, I'm so glad to see you back. I didn't know the depth of your illness situation. And I know it was real, but I didn't inquire and I didn't know what hospital you're in, but I'm definitely praying for you. And it's so good to see you. Just a few things to go over. You know, I'm concerned about the city treasurer. I have empathy for her. Something going on. Not angry at her at all. However, we have a responsibility to make sure the public understands what's going on here. Now, to say that the city of Inglewood was a shoo-in to get stadium, Maria, you know that that's a cra- that's a difficult statement to swallow. The frontrunners actually for football in this region were Farmers Field, which is supported by AEG, and, uh, the, uh, Carson Site, which was the favorite of Dean Spanos and Mark Davis. The league favored Dean Spanos because he was in the oldest stadium in the league, and that was where the sentiment was. This was a long, hard battle for, for us to convince the league. You had to have, uh, uh, more than a majority of the league that would have to vote for the site. And over a year's time, Ann Cronkite and his people, the mayor and the city council, did everything we could show, to show that Inglewood was best. So it doesn't bother me that the treasurer may think Donald Duck could have done it. Donald Duck couldn't have done it. Since then, charges have come. NCAA Championship Bowl game is now scheduled to be here. FIFA World Cup. Clippers project is on point. Girl Scouts of Marina Del Rey, their regional headquarters, thirty-five thousand strong, to be here in Inglewood. Who would have ever thought the Girl Scouts would come to Inglewood? Uh, the NFL Network should even cover City to come here. The twenty-twenty-eight Olympic World Games will open here. But Ellie Philharmonic right next door is redoing the Security Bank Building. And our children will have access to be trained by the greatest orchestra musicians in the world here in Inglewood. But all that pales into, to what just happened today. It was announced that the, the World Wrestling Federation will have Wrestle- WrestleMania. WrestleMania in Inglewood. And they gave me a championship belt with the city seal on each side. It's a real championship belt for the city of champions. Or, or Randy Macho Man Savage, or Mr. T. So I wanted to clear that up. And then I also wanted to give Mr. Sparza the opportunity to, to clear up the insinuation that he went to the Super Bowl paid by.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh, no, I did not go to the Super Bowl. I watched the Super Bowl with my son and his family down in Long Beach. And I, uh, I catered the chicken wings and the beer.
So, you guys, uh, my empathy to the treasurer, there's something going on and we have no anger for her. But we're going to have to, um, figure out a way to restore decorum to the meetings. Uh, this, this just isn't acceptable. The reality is, is that the treasurer speaks at the leisure of the chair. She's not a council member. She does not have to be on the agenda. And if this keeps on, she won't be. So, um, with that, I'm gonna close the, uh, meeting in the name of Loretta Andrews. So sad, you know, it's a hit-and-run on Van Ness. Uh, Bob Baccarat, the husband of Jackie Baccarat, the, um, executive director of the South Bay Council of Governments, and Johnny Lathrum, a District Four resident. And we're adjourned.